Commissioners Board of Work Session, it is Wednesday, November 9th, 2022. It is 1:39 PM. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280 for public virtual attendance. You may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mensah. To my Commissioner Gary Edwards is joining us via Zoom, but will be joining us in the Boardroom shortly. We also have in the Boardroom County Manager Ramiro Chavez, as well as Community Planning and Economic Development Director Joshua Cummings and other staff members to discuss A19 Wireless Facilities Follow-Up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a follow-up to the previous briefing. The staff walked you through based on the recommendations of the Planning Commission. I think it was a great conversation. The Chair of the Planning Commission was here to provide her perspective on some of the conversations related to that. This is a follow-up for the Board to have. If you have any additional questions for the staff, I will ask the Board at the end of this briefing, if you feel comfortable in bringing an AIS for you to consider setting up a public hearing, for you to receive public testimony, if you consider taking a final action on this item. Just have to praise the staff and Josh and Chris leadership. They have been bringing a lot of code items that has been on the docket. And that was aligned with the direction of the Board. Do you guys like to see some of those moving forward? And this is just one of those items ready for completion, if the Board would like to proceed in that direction. Those are my two cents. Josh?
Thank you for that. I'll jump off on that. Thank you to the Board for their direction on the many codes that we've been bringing. Appreciate the appreciation. But really, staff has done an amazing job. Thank you to Kate and the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission has really dove into some really difficult issues, and this one in particular, as the Board directed, we have engaged a stakeholder group to discuss the many different facets of the wireless code and really worked hard to understand the sideboards. What is the parameters within our decision-making authority of Thurston County? And they're quite narrow. And that's been the ongoing dialogue with the Board of County Commissioners, is to understand that, yes, in general, there's lots of items that are connected to wireless code that we all want to have a larger conversation about. But these codes and ordinance are very narrow in our decision-making authority that we can provide to you, the Board, to provide direction and approval. So the Planning Commission, I think that, as County Manager relayed, Eric Cisner did a nice job of relaying what the parameters, the sideboards are for this conversation. From the Planning Commission's perspective, staff will again present their perspective, the Planning Commission's perspective, to the Board of County Commissioners and then hopefully receive direction on next steps. So just trying to keep knocking things down that the Board of County Commissioners has put on our docket to bring to you. Keith?
Go ahead.
Want to share your screen?
Thank you. Yeah, I am Caitlin Nelson. My main focus is like what was previously said, to go over some of the details on the decisions that were made for our review and the Langley Code that was brought up at the last meeting on October 12th.
That was really great, being able to bring your screen up and say that. It's well done.
Thank you. All right. So the county is updating the wireless code to be consistent with federal law. You received this information at the last meeting. The major changes in the code relate back to these four main legal considerations. The county must expedite the review and approval process for applications that are not a substantial change, which is defined in the draft. The county has predetermined timelines for how quickly staff must make a decision for other wireless facility permits. The county may not have regulations that would have the effect of prohibiting wireless facilities in any given area. And the county may not have regulations that are based on environmental and health effects of radio frequency emissions. And I'll go over some of the requests that were made by the Stakeholder Committee and how some of them relate back to these laws.
And just real quick, those four bullet points, those aren't ours. That's what's been provided to us by the federal government.
This is a summary of that, yes. First, I'd like to go over some of the changes that we made in the draft that came out of the Stakeholder Committee. These are what the community, well, I should rephrase that. The community members and the wireless representatives of the Stakeholder Committee agreed that there should be specific areas identified as a priority for placement of wireless facilities. Then the Planning Commission proposed doing this by determining this list of zones where new towers would be processed through an administrative process instead of a review from a hearing examiner. So this would incentivize applicants to place towers in these specific zones over less ideal locations like residential areas. Many of the requests from the community stakeholders were not pursued further. One request was for the county to provide notice and request input from the community on all wireless permit applications. This gets back to the law, which requires an expedited permit process and it gives predetermined timelines for decisions. The county permit process also already has set timelines for administrative permits and hearing examiner reviews, as well as what type of notice would be done for each permit type. And the proposed draft aligns with the current processes rather than creating new processes. Another request was to increase minimum setbacks and spacing distances. The law prevents the county from having regulations that could result in prohibiting wireless facilities in any given areas. And increasing those setbacks and spacing distances risks overlapping with that law. Planning Commission did discuss this request further and a motion was not made to increase setbacks or spacing. And the draft, as written, does align with the consultant recommendations. Community stakeholders also requested independent testing of all wireless permits. The law prevents the county from regulating based on environmental and health effects of radio frequency emissions. The county can conduct independent testing to ensure that facilities are complying with federal limits as long as the county does not further restrict emission limitations. However, the law prevents the county from charging an application fee to test facilities. So this would require the county to fund either additional staff and training or to hire independent contractors to fulfill this request. Another request was that standards for facilities in the right-of-way be located in county zoning code. And right-of-way standards for the county are currently located in the road standards and in franchise agreements. And the road standards have their own public input process through the Public Works Department, not in our zoning code. And then there were several requests which would not align with typical land use permits in zoning code, like requiring group of insurance and requirements for ADA and FHAA, which are required elsewhere, like franchise agreements or in other road standards, extensive written evidence, stricter regulations for environmental assessments and noise limits, and other similar requests like that. At the last meeting, there was also some discussion about a request to evaluate the city of Langley in their recent code update, which was brought up by community members. In short, Langley is located on Whidby Island in Island County with a little over 1,000 people, according to the 2010 census data. And the city limits are about 0.8 square miles. And staff and consultants did review that code update and have determined that it is largely inconsistent with federal law. And that is the majority of what I wanted to cover with you. The next step would be to submit, for staff to submit an AIS to schedule a public hearing. And then staff would make any small changes requested for legal reasons and issue a SEPA. And then we would hold the public hearing after that. Any questions?
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No, I do not have any questions. Good presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Manser.
So, starting with the testing for radio frequency. So you're saying that we would have to pay for that testing? We can't, we can't set lower limits, got that. We can't require them to do testing. We can't charge them to do testing. We'd basically have to pay 100% of the required testing. And do we have any sense of how difficult that is or expensive that kind of testing is?
I don't. I just know that it was not recommended by the consultants as a route for the county to take.
Oh, we could research that.
Yes, definitely.
The second item is the, so there's a rule that we can't, that we have to create an expedited permit process. So I'm wondering, and that's why it's being said that we shouldn't have public notice, public comment, or hearing examiner reviews on certain categories of facilities, as they're called. So I'm just wondering, what are the parameters of this expedited permit process? I mean, like, for example, remember when we had Beaver Creek and the SEPA was like 14 days people had? And then, you know, that was being complained is like way too fast for somebody to actually, you know, hire a consultant, you know, get the information. So I guess I'm wondering, what are the bounds here? I mean, I know that you can compress public notice periods and make them smaller. Notice doesn't seem to slow anything down, requiring notice. So I'm just wondering, what is it that you or the consultant think would violate this directive we have not, to create an expedited process? Like, what's a normal process? How would that be messed up if we required notice and public comment?
So in our zoning code, we have what kind of notice is done to who, what kind of input is received for administrative permits and then permits that go to a public hearing, and how long that takes and how long the notice would be open for. So most of the permits that we're looking at with the wireless facilities, things like co-locations and replacements, those, we would be required to make a decision within 90 days. Our hearing examiner process is 150 days. So the timeline doesn't line up. But the other issue is that our administrative permits are, if you meet the requirements in them, they are automatically approved. We don't have any wiggle room if they're automatically meeting the requirements. So receiving public input could be controversial if it doesn't affect whether or not it's approved. There are a couple of different things that get involved when we're looking at how we have our permits set up in the code already. So the main issue would just be the fact that we would have to create a separate process for this, if you were interested in doing that.
Because hearing examiners takes too long. The administrative process is set up to not be, to be basically check-the-box approval. And you're saying if we did an administrative process less than 150 days or within the 90-day timeframe, and that's set in stone, you're saying? 90 days, we have to be able to issue a?
Yeah, that's in the federal law.
Okay, so you're saying to create a process that would, that would take in public comment and still reach that 90-day would be a new process we'd have to create?
Correct.
Okay, and that? Okay, and then, all right, I'll leave that for a minute. And then setbacks, obviously, was the other big category. I mean, this is where I just, you know, I understand there's a directive not to create regulations that would prohibit coverage. And I know how that can work with setbacks, you know? A setback on a setback, and you know, there's a whole recovery. I mean, I understand the concept, but the citizen group, and I met with these folks after the last briefing to hear more specifically what they're trying to accomplish. They don't believe that, they were saying that some setbacks are like 10 feet and whatnot, and they don't believe that more reasonable setbacks would violate that prohibition of coverage prong. And that it's not correct to say that we're hemmed in by that, like that that requires us to accept these very, in their point of view, compressed, small setbacks. I don't, do you have a response to that? Or is, I mean, is 100 feet, 10 feet? I mean, I don't know, I don't know at what point you get to where you can't cover, you know? And I just don't know all that stuff.
Yeah, and so we're relying on the consultant, the expert, that has provided us guidance on the technical aspects, just like that is one of them, as to where he believes that that would be going sideways with the federal law. And so if citizens have other input or perspective, that's exactly what the public hearing is for, is to receive that input and then for the Board to factor that into their decision-making process. But what you're being presented is our best effort of listening to the consultant that the Board hired on these very technical items.
And the consultant did go over some of those concerns with the Planning Commission. We discussed whether or not they wanted to propose larger setbacks and spacing requirements, and there was not a motion made to increase those.
So the consultant gave a latitude, said that the Planning Commission could have, could have legally chosen something bigger, and the Planning Commission, which already at least decided not to do that.
They stated that they would have concerns, but that they did have the ability to make that recommendation, yes.
So could you put? The consultant stated that he, the consultant, would have concerns, but that the Planning Commission did have that latitude. And so the Planning Commission listened to the consultant and said, "Okay, if you've got concerns, let's not even make a motion." And that was on the, that was on the slides.
Can you, if it's not already at somebody's fingertips, could you illuminate for us kind of what that latitude is? Like, you know, what are the, what are the parameters of what the Planning Commission could have selected and not made the consultant's head explode? You know, I mean, as being not in compliance with law? Because I don't have a sense, sitting here, that, of how far could they have gone? Another five feet or 150 feet? I mean, what was the parameters of what would be reasonably defensible in court?
Go for it. Oh, I think the consultant would, they don't want, they stated that they were not interested in talking openly in that kind of setting, the small details of where their concerns would be lessened. They'd rather go over in an executive session.
Because it's about mitigating us getting sued, the county being sued by the communications groups. So we could have that conversation, but we didn't get into it deeply. But we could definitely engage with the consultant on that topic.
Okay, I mean, those are my, from what I can understand, those are the three or four areas of greatest concern to the community groups. And I have to test that against, you know, where are we up against a brick wall by the law? Or where is there some flex that the Board? I mean, I know, they sent me, for example, and Caitlin, I think it was your email, but they just were showing me that, not being critical, but they were just saying that you had, you had basically said a lot of their items were, you know, related to decisions the Board would have to make. You know, like, it wasn't right to consider them because to go where they wanted to go would require Board direction, you know? So, so that kind of puts it, that puts it on my back, you know? I have to understand.
Well, so, sorry to.
Direction and whether or not I need to be giving some direction to provide that consideration of whatever issue is, needs consideration.
And completely understand that. I think the framing from the, some of those comments is a little not aligned with what actually happened. So Caitlin, as staff, didn't come up with these. Caitlin, as staff, listened to the lawyer that the Board hired that has technical expertise in this. So it's not Caitlin coming up with the concepts. It's Caitlin putting in the concepts that the Board hired attorney provided.
And we're working within the parameters that the Board had already provided us during the docketing sessions. So when we were looking at where are those areas to push and pull, we stayed within the sideboards that we had already been provided, which is why you're starting to see the comments that, like, well, the Board will have to make that decision because it's outside of where we were already told to go.
Yeah, I think that kind of connects to this email. But, but that, you know, but, like, they're, they have, they sent me this email and to the direction, this is Caitlin speaking. The direction I've been given, and part of which I'll be writing to the Planning Commission, is that many of these decisions have to be made by the Board of County Commissioners, not at the Planning Commission level. And that sounds like it's right because it was things related to facilities and rights-of-way designs, things that were outside the scope. I get that. But I just want to make sure that we're doing our job here, you know? As I've said multiple times, I don't understand this very, very well, but that's not an excuse for me to not do my job because it's a difficult area. I mean, if I have to spend more time, then that's what we'll do, or that's what I'll do. But trying to figure out, trying to suss out, where do I need to put more of my brain power? And where is it just, you know, black and white, you know? Because the law is the law. I don't want to beat my head against the wall, but I want to be responsive to the concerns of the citizens who don't believe that they're getting a completely straight answer about where the law is set and where it has flex.
I think that makes total sense. And I want to jump in here real quick with the County Manager. I think procedurally, there may be a space after the public hearing to have a conversation with the consultant in an executive session to help with some of those where there's flex and where there's a brick wall. That might be helpful for Commissioner Manser?
Well, that probably will be the opportunity. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Josh. Because if you're asking to change the parameters in which the Board provided during the docketing process to staff, that would require to go back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration. So because you, I think the Board is considering changing their, their scope in a way. But certainly, the Board has plenty of latitude, as you have exercised in the past, after you hold a public hearing. And that point is, becomes your product as to how you can probably implement some modifications to that. But at this point, prior to the public hearing, I believe you change the parameters of the scope of work and direct the staff to redo it. They have to go back to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily doing that. The things that I'm, trying to focus on the things Caitlin had in her slide, the big items. And I, I'm not married to whether this, these discussions that Josh suggested happen before the public hearing or after. Because as you say, we can, we can have the public hearing and then go a different direction.
Right.
So that'd be, I guess, up to the Board. I don't really care, but I definitely would not be, I'd need some of that, a little bit more of that information before I'd be comfortable with taking action.
Yeah, and at this point, it's really is whether you feel comfortable at this point based on what the information the Board has received for the Board to consider setting a public hearing. That's really the, the small scope of this briefing at this point.
And likely, you'll hear some of the same things that you've already received in the public hearing. And then thereafter, consider, you know, setbacks and review times and have that conversation.
Are you, oh, you have a question?
Just one.
Okay, go ahead.
How long have you been working on this?
In total?
Yeah, in total.
We've been working on this particular ordinance since 2019.
Thank you.
I think I have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong on the assumption of the intent of the FCC, the federal law. I think the intent was to really to address the micro antennas. Is the micro antennas, as I call it, there's not antennas that we know the towers, as we know it, is the micro antennas. And the micro antennas, they can go consecutively. And I think what the intent is to provide coverage of 5G and beyond. So on the, when we talk about the micro antennas, that's my definition of micro antenna compared to the, to the long-standing towers, really is, it was an attempt to this document to have a little bit of control in a way how our code will define what the parameters, where they can be placed. Absence this, I think our staff has been very clear as well as their consultant. You know, the companies can go, just go ahead and, as I said, without the county, but they have the latitude because they're governed by federal law. And I think then, at least from my point of view, it's always difficult to react to federal regulations because the federal regulations put those very small parameters. But I appreciate the perspective from the Board in terms of what is the flexibility within those parameters. I don't want to use the box analogy anymore. I'm just going to use the brackets. But really, what, that's what we're talking about is, is really, my understanding is the micro antennas. And the micro antennas is, doesn't take a lot of infrastructure to be placed in a way. But also, we don't want to be hanging every single power pole or any single light pole in the urban areas. And I think this is trying to capture that, on the neighborhoods, is a different process. And that's when they need to go through the, through the hearing examiners. So is the administrative rules, I appreciate what the areas and the land use, they're not necessarily public will be directly exposed to visually or otherwise. And so at least from a humble perspective, I appreciate that effort to give that administrative rule option for those areas outside of the neighborhoods. When it comes to neighborhoods and the power poles and the light poles, that's a different process. And the different process goes to the hearing examiners. And the hearing examiners, by default, requires additional steps. And the Board will certainly will be in the process of things appeal as a result of the hearing examiner's decision. So I think that's probably, and again, this is my understanding. I hope it has a little bit of history. But correct me if everything that I said is off.
No, that was correct. I mean, we were attempting to find the happy medium that allowed the industry to put up and we can have coverage for these particular technology while still providing those, that local control that the neighborhoods wanted to see. So we incentivized those other areas.
Could you spell out the, I mean, you're saying neighborhoods. Is, can you spell it a little clearer? Like, what is subject to the hearing examiner versus what isn't?
Go back to that slide.
That slide?
Yeah, I couldn't run it down. Your slide.
While she's keying, while she's bringing that up, thank you for keying in on that, County Manager, because that's really a creative way that we've worked within the sideboards to find flexibility, as Chris said, to incentivize people that want to go in certain areas, but also slow the process down for where there might be more population centers. They can see that.
So in those areas, you know, you don't see neighborhood. So the neighborhood, somebody has, because I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
That's the purpose of coverage. Then you have to go through the hearing examiners.
Right.
So tower is not in, so not in a preferred zone is what you're referring to as neighborhoods?
Everything that's not bulleted out of in that administrative area.
Everything that you see up there is a commercial or industrial zone.
And a tower would be either the, what you think of as a traditional lattice tower, and it would also be like a monopole, something that is bigger than a utility pole, but smaller than a traditional tower.
So the hearing examiner permit for towers not a preferred zone, does that, back to the County Manager's request, does that include the micro?
That's my term, micro antennas. It's sort of technical.
So those would be considered under small cell. And those are generally in the right-of-way. So they usually either are so small that they're considered, they are not considered a substantial change, in which case we have to expedite the permit. If they meet what we ask for, we have to approve it within 60 days. Or it's within the right-of-way, and we would like that to be in the, in the road standards because that is where our right-of-way standards are normally located, and we would be able to update quicker with the change in technology and the change in design, and it still has public process.
But in the road standard, that's when the Board has to prove the changes under road standards.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
To a public hearing, and that's where you have the opportunity to set those parameters as well.
Absolutely.
So there's another check for the Board to provide your perspective related to the impacts or not to neighborhoods.
Okay. It is 208. At this point, do Commissioners feel comfortable moving forward or do we need more information?
I'm prepared to follow the Planning Commission's recommendation. No further.
And this is move forward with a public hearing?
Just to bring?
Just for a public.
Yeah, yeah, to set the public.
Yeah, just for a public.
That's not only us at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Not for, not to, just to set a public hearing. So thumbs up for you on that?
I'll abstain from this vote.
And I'll hold you, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good job on complicated stuff.
Appreciate the direction.
Okay, you're adjourned. Thank you. Sorry, Brian.